Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Brings us down to communications. We have an invitation for the tour of the Tungus Historical Museum on Wednesday at 5:30. We have a memorandum from Carl on the seasonal sales tax and single unit sales cap information that Councilmember Olson wanted us to have. Also, on the use of passenger worker sheet to offset costs of general government, which Mr. Olson asked to be brought here, too, and we have it. That brings us to persons to be heard. We have Judith here first.
Councilmembers, my name is Judith McQuary. I live at 2196 South Tungus Highway, not quite in the city limits, but very close. I haven't been gone long enough, and it's all Carl's fault that I'm here tonight. He didn't want me to forget how to knit. I am here to talk to you about the Outreach Division of Ketchikan Public Library. I sent each one of you a letter outlining my concerns, and I'm just here to reiterate it. I know that the library is not on your list for tonight, but I'm heading out of town, so this is my only chance. So, are there any questions that you have that I can answer?
Anybody has any questions for Judith? See you then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice trip. That brings us down to Barbara. Is it Morgan? Mine does, too.
So Mayor Williams in the City Council, I am here representing... I live at 192 Raspberry Lane. I'm here on behalf of Oceans Alaska. I was here in July, and we did a presentation about Oceans Alaska and a budget request. At that time, you guys thought that it would be good to delay that budget request until this funding cycle that you guys were just digging into tonight. So I'm here to just kind of bring that back before you. We are still hoping that even though funding is tight, that you could consider our budget request of the $48,000 this year and next year to help us meet our operational funding, to get us to the point of being able to get into our larger building, which we are also looking for funding at the state level right now. So, again, if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Any questions for Barbara? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
George, please say.
My name is George Passley. I'm the Outreach Librarian, and I understand that the library is on the list for tomorrow night, so I do plan to be here, but I just wanted to be sure that it misses, so I came tonight. So if it does come up, I'm here to answer your question.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to address the council tonight? It wasn't on the list. See you then. We'll move on to new business. Five, hey, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 132530, Draft 2014, General Government Annual Budget?
Moved.
We have a second. Moved and seconded. I hope everybody dove into the budget and has all kinds of questions and everything. I'm gonna start off with Carl. You're gonna make your presentation. An overview for the council, and we'll get into some questions and see what we're all looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm gonna try to be brief and do this just in sort of bullet comment format. As was noted in the transmittal letter, the draft general government budget before the City Council this evening is not a proposed spending plan that either the Finance Director or I endorse. It's a result of direction that the City Council gave last July at its work session, at which time staff was advised not to increase property or sales taxes, not to increase utility rates, and to keep spending levels no higher than those approved for 2013. If I could ask the council to look at the table on page B32 of the transmittal letter. I think that's the appropriate place to start. The draft budget that was compiled by the departments was pretty much a status quo spending plan. Although it was slightly more than the approved spending plan for 2013, it was simply not sustainable. It would have drawn down general fund reserves by 1.4 million from 3.5 million to 2.1 million. At that rate of spending, reserves of the general fund would have been exhausted by 2016. Again, I emphasize that the draft spending plan prepared by the departments in accordance with City Council direction does not provide for a sustainable level of spending. To produce a draft spending plan that complies with the parameters specified by the City Council and one that is sustainable, something on the expenditure side had to give. It simply stated that was the number of employees. Given that personnel accounts for 75% of the general fund, there was not enough discretionary general fund spending that could be eliminated and keep the organization functional while maintaining reserves. The same can be said of the wastewater services fund. Let me be clear, Mr. Newell and I do not support the proposed staffing cuts. They are deep and will have an adverse impact on services and the way we approach the day-to-day operations of the city. There was, however, no alternative if the City Council's direction was to be followed in a sustainable spending plan presented. At this point in the discussion, one could reasonably ask, how did we get to this point? Again, I would draw the City Council's attention to pages B33 and B34 of the transmittal letter. Mr. Newell and I have provided a detailed summary of why the city's financial position has changed. I won't review all of the relevant factors, but two are worth mentioning. In the last couple of years, we will have added $850,000 in new debt service for the fire station and library. At the same time, the City Council opted to remove annual revenue of at least $439,000 from the general fund's raw fish tax to pay for the drive-down ramp. That's a combined swing of almost $1.3 million. When added to the escalating cost of personnel, insurance, and loss of federal and state financial assistance, one conclusion becomes clear. If the City Council wants to maintain the current level of services and not eliminate employee positions, we need to recognize that the solution is on the revenue side of the equation. If that consensus can be reached among members of the City Council, Finance Director and I are prepared to offer a proposal to maintain staffing at current levels. In presenting such an option, let me be clear that not all reductions that have been proposed in the draft budget will be restored. The City Council needs to recognize that at current staffing levels, we are still proposing to pay this year's debt service on the fire station using $489,000 from remaining bond proceeds. This revenue source will not be available next year. Twelve months from now, you'll already be that amount short going into budget deliberations. And that's why some reductions in spending need to be made now, and unfortunately, I believe this will likely lead some council members to conclude that not all staffing cuts should be restored. One final comment before closing. Based on discussions with individual council members, the Finance Director and I recognize that there is a desire to potentially use CPV funds or other port revenue to help solve the revenue problem within the general fund. If the council desires to pursue such a strategy, we believe it will be at least 12 months off before such a policy can be implemented. First, there is a potential $2.7 million liability facing the city for the repair and/or replacement of the Thomas Basin Viewing Platform. CPV funds are a logical revenue source for the repair of this tourism-related infrastructure. Second, if the City Council wants to avoid potential litigation regarding the use of port revenues, there needs to be an active discussion with the industry and legal counsel. This has yet to occur as it has in Juneau. Lastly, if CPV funds are to be determined as a means to offset general fund expenditures, there is the potential that the current payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of $319,000 may be at risk. Currently, Juneau does not charge its port a payment in lieu of taxes. All of these factors need to be taken into account prior to diverting a portion of port revenues to the general fund. Mr. Mayor, essentially, that's the overview. Mr. Newell and I welcome the opportunity of working with the council to finalize next year's spending plan.
Thank you, Carl. Where to begin? The...I think I'll go around and have council members talk about their thoughts on the budget to open up with my own before we can go in. Well, I'll go with the direction. Carl's mentioned that it's a revenue problem, and I think, I've brought up many times about using the CPV funds as an option, and he has some concerns on that. And there's other options in the way of looking at another fifth, five tenths of a mil increase. There's also looking at capping the raw fish tax to the harbor and taking part of it back into the general fund. So there's other options in looking at revenues, which I've been doing. The other thing, if anybody has any ideas on any more ways of cutting the budget or of going through here and see other things that we can do to reduce spending, that's great, too. Unfortunately, I do agree with Carl, it is a revenue issue. I don't consider it a problem. Some of these things that we have to fund, the community voted on to do, especially the library and fire department, and we have to come up with the funds to pay the debts off on that. So, we've got some options. Appreciate Carl and Bob and your effort and what you brought to us, and now we get to play with it. I'd just like to hear the council and see their direction and what kind of thoughts they had on that. And we're just talking general, I mean, city budget right now, not KPU. So, who would like to start? Go ahead, Bob.
I don't disagree with anything that Carl said. We do need to infuse some capital into the general fund. Staff has been telling that to us for a number of years, that we need to look at different rates and taxes and stuff that we're falling behind, and we can't continue to exhaust our reserves. As far as the warpage fees, I think it's on page 62 or C12. It shows that budgeted 2014 is $6,510,000. And if I understand correctly, there's about two and a half million dollars of that going into the port reserves at this particular time. The rest of it, I think, is for debt service and other options. While I was in Anchorage, I had a chance to sit down with the mayor of Juneau and talk about their process, and they allocate $3 of their warpage fee, and they have a formula base for the departments to determine what their cost of services they're providing to the industry are. And as the memo from staff shows, that, you know, they're infusing a million points, or 1.4 million into the general fund support for public works, engineering, that type of stuff. Plus, they're still doing some medical services and other stuff there. And I do agree that we have to make sure what we're doing is correct and fair, and we're not double-dipping. We have interdepartmental charges, and we do have pilots that we have to be concerned with. But I think this is a revenue source that we should be looking at. And I'm not in sure that if we have to reinvent the wheel. Juneau has some legal opinions in regards to how they use those fees that I think that we can review and maybe utilize. Again, I don't know what the timetable would be to infuse that money back into the system and relieve some of our struggles here. And then we, you know, I looked at sales tax. We're at $10,307,500, and I think that number will be about right or will be adjusted or something. But it shows that, you know, the one cent's about 2.9 million. So a half a cent is the 1.4 that we're short at this particular point in time. A seasonal sales tax might get us, you know, about $500,000. And I hadn't made a figure on what raising the limit to 2,000 would be, but I think those are all good ideas to look at. Our property tax, the finance department showed me a document that compared us to other communities in the state, and we're about in the middle on that. There's some that charge none, and there's some that charge up to 24 million. And so I'm not, you know, I really don't want to go there if I don't have to. I think sales tax is a fair way to do that. And I understand that after the departments, and they did a wonderful job, I think, in bringing this forward, their original proposal, we ended up $1.42 million short. And I think that's where we have to get to. But as Carl says, we can't stop there because we do have additional debt that will be coming on after we utilize some of the funds that we have, and we have to move there. I don't like to raise taxes or utility rates any better than anybody else, but it costs money to live here, and the prices are going up. When I look through the budget, we're looking at 10% in workman's comp, 15% in insurance costs. We have employee raises, and we're not putting any new revenue into this thing, so we're gonna fall behind if we don't do something. Our debt service, we've been bonding, and right now, we're at $5,284,000 on $147 million worth of debt, including interest. And if we go out and bond for more projects, that debt service increases, and that's less money we have for our operation budget capital. We need to consider what we're gonna do with those going forward. We have police department and fire department that are looking at $290,000 a year to 2018, just in vehicle purchases. And we have no plan of how we're gonna fund those. And then we look at the capital project in 2014. They have $93 million in there. I understand that we have the hospital, Water Street, and other capital projects in there, about $87 million. So actually, the capital project outside of those is about $5.5 to $5.7 million. And I don't know if we can defer those over three years, because I think the projects are gonna be phased. And then I started looking at, well, what does this mean to our residents? Our solid waste collection is $9.72. You know, we have an area-wide solid waste fee, but as you go through the residential water, the sewer, and electrical rate on 1,000 kilowatt-hours is $94. So right now, it's $202.83 per resident, and that's very, very conservative. So if you did a 5% across the board on those in rates, that's $10.14 per household. So I think that that's someplace that we need to look also. But as we do that, we've talked in the past about the fish processors, and obviously, they use 30 million gallons, and it costs us $2.60 some cents for 1,000 gallons to treat that. And so at $75,000 with the treatment, we're charging them $17,000 a year. Those things have to be adjusted for efficiency. So I'm looking to listen to what Carl has to say about infusing more money into the budget. Because I do think that's where we need to go. I would hope that we'd get as many employees secure. I think it's unfortunate, just at this time, that we put employees in a position going into the holidays, but they don't know if they're gonna have a job yet, of course. So I think we need to work at...that's where our value is at. That our employees are what makes this city move, and I think that they're doing a good job for us. We need to see what we can do to get them back. That's all I got.
Go ahead, KJ, you're next.
Bob's a lot better at figures than I am. All I know is we got more going out that's not coming in. We gotta fix that. I'm perfectly willing to talk about sales tax, anything like that. I don't see anywhere on this budget that I've been able to catch. Well, we could save $100,000 between the whole packet that we're getting. I mean, it could be there, but we cannot continue to borrow money from one department to another department, shuffle money around. It's all the same money. It's all a big stack of money that we just keep taking money out. We've got to replace that. And it's a lot of hard choices. I'm not going for laying off employees. I mean, I don't believe I am. I'm always willing to chat with Carl, because he's a pretty bright guy. But this is a real tough time, kids. We've got to back to the wants and needs again. We want a lot of things. There are some things we need. One way or the other, we have to raise revenue, or we're real screwed, and that's it for me.
Next? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I'll follow that up.
Thank you.
On that sentiment. I always approach the budgets in two things. One, I've said it a lot of, many times, I believe in stability of government. Your government shouldn't expand greatly in times of, in good times, and then shrink itself down in times when it's tight. Right now, for the government, it's not too tight, but we've kind of, over the last decade and a half, we've kind of done this to ourselves, or two decades, and we haven't taken care of the capital expenditures. And now, I think, we're getting to that time right now that we have to be concerned about our future, and so we can't. In order to cut right now, we're really gonna hurt the safety of our community and the economic future of our community. I think there are a lot of ways that we can raise this money without impacting year-round residents to a great extent. One is, I do think we could take half of the raw fish tax back. That would give us about $100,000. If we did the half percent sales tax increase in the summer and reduce in winter, that gives us about an approximate...and Bob, I apologize, I'm gonna use round numbers. Okay. That'll give us about $500,000. If we increase the sales tax single item cap from $1,000 to $2,000, that's gonna give us about $200,000. Right there, we've just raised $900,000. And I do agree that Juneau's kind of already done the legwork for us on this with the ports. And I understand the issue of the taxes, payment in lieu of taxes. So if we do what Juneau's done, and I've been in Juneau during a tourist season, not a whole one, but it doesn't seem like Juneau's tourism impacts the community any greater than it impacts ours. And so I could see us taking a million out of ports to cover that, and that would be about that one and a half, or at least the difference. And right there, we're at roughly $1.9 million, and we haven't impacted our local residents to the tune that it's going to damage a lot of people. I was one of the original people that were not in support of making or keeping the budget at last year's levels, and I think this is a more realistic manner of looking at the budget and sets us up for long-term spending and long-term capital.
Thank you. Marty?
Okay. Yeah, I think that I agree with you about raising the revenue. We've got a lot of really talented people here. I know that sometimes people grumble that the city employees are, that they say, are paid too much and too many benefits, but we do have some highly skilled individuals that don't come along every day, and we have people who are willing to run into burning buildings and save people, and they're deserving of a good wage. I think, I wasn't for holding the spending limits at the same level, but I think that this was a good thing to do so that we could see exactly what that means with people wanting to say, oh, don't spend any more money. And it looks 18 to 20 people losing their jobs, among other things. And I'm not for that. I think Matt's idea, especially about the raising the limit on the $2,000 on the sales taxes, is a good one. The boroughs already adopted that, and they're just waiting for us to follow suit, so that would be set up and ready to go. Sales tax, maybe, I talked with Carl, maybe to dedicate that to the library, and that would be a little bit more clear. I would be concerned that people might think the sales tax goes up is related to the hospital after all that we talked about that. And I do want to make that clear if that happens, but that is not the case. We want this town to be a great place for people to live. It's increasingly obvious that with new technology, people are able to live wherever they want to and work from home, and this would be a great place. But we're not gonna get new people and new businesses and new industries wanting to move here if it's a crappy little town. And it's not a crappy little town, but if we stay with these kinds of budgets, it will be.
Thank you, Marty.
You're welcome.
One little, Marty just said that the borough already adopted the 2,000 spending. That was by, yeah, but that was by, I just want to point out, I believe that was by a vote of the borough residents. So a majority of the people already believe that it should be increased.
Yeah, do you want to add anything?
Well, I mean, everyone's pretty well summed everything up. I guess I'm just always perplexed, because we get to this position, and we all know what has to be done, but no one wants to be the bad guy, including myself. But at some point, where do you draw the line in the sand and say enough is enough? I mean, it's like KJ said, wants and needs, wants and needs. I would hate to have to let employees go. I'm an advocate for, you know, keeping people employed and families here year-round and whatnot, but on the same side of that coin, raising sales tax and those type of things. And this is my inner Sam, unchanneled. I can hear him saying, you know, those are going to be paid off the backs of people that necessarily can't afford that. You know, we have a huge demographic of people that are at poverty level in terms of household income. So how do you balance that? I mean, ultimately, I don't think we'll ever make everyone happy, and we have to try to find the middle ground there to not only take care of what we need to now, but like Carl says, well, we need to look ahead. We need to quit doing this on a year-by-year-by-year basis, and then coming up next year and going, oh, my gosh, you know, here we are again. I think that we really need to try to look long-term as well, because I don't think as an employee, I'd want to come here every, you know, hear about this budgeting session every year and think, oh, my gosh, am I gonna have a job? Am I not gonna have a job? I mean, it's ridiculous that, you know, they would have to work under those kinds of circumstances. But with that said, you know, I don't know if there are areas in terms of employees and those type of things that can be tightened up. I just think that there's a whole lot of different opportunities and things to look into. It's just gonna take a lot of close searching and elbow grease and trying to find out what the right mix of that is for not only sustaining this budget, but hopefully working towards budgets in the future. I don't have a magic ball, no magic eight ball, no magic wand, but I don't think we can keep coming back here every year and just do the same old same.
Thank you. Judy finishes off.
Well, you know, as a new council member, I came here and I was gonna trim all the fat. That was it. That's what we hear around town, the average person, you know? There's too much fat. And then I start looking at this budget, and I'm like, folks, there's no fat. We really need to get some more money. People vote for these things, they need to expect to pay for these things. Workers' compensation has gone up, insurance has gone up, all these things go up. We can't, as a council, I believe, expect to hold things to last year's levels. I mean, if we can, I think that's great, but we better find the money to be able to keep these people employed. One of the things that I was really irritated about was, you know, I'm a mother. I employ people. The fact that people had to go home for Thanksgiving and worry about whether they were gonna have a job in the new year, that really irritated me. The fact that they were at home with their families, not knowing if they're going to be able to have Christmas, that irritated me. And I think when we make these decisions, we really have to start thinking about the people we're affecting. I think that Matt's sales tax presentation, the memos that I received, I like that idea. I think it's fair, I think it shares it equally. And I'm sure the rest of you, I'm looking at you because you have all the numbers, will also have some really good ideas in how we can infuse capital in here. I'm worried about CPV funds. I don't like the idea of being sued. But, you know, I think that I probably want to do a little more research on that and maybe speaking to an attorney. I don't see that as a bad idea. I'm excited about the process, so let's get to work.
All right, Carl, I guess before we dig in, unless somebody has... Another angle I want to go to is, once we've talked about Riverside, is look at, has anybody found any other things that they think we should be able to cut into this budget? And I'm not talking about line-on by line-on, but department by department, if you guys have something in a department that you want to address, let me know. The, I guess the thing I want to get on to, Carl, is the CPV thing. Like, I have not read the memo, but I had talked to you briefly about it. but I had talked to you briefly about it and utilizing, um, you know, as I talked to you before, Juno puts, um, some of their money into their general fund. Do they do it like you were saying, that they have to, um, decide how much or percentage of that department or whatever they're looking at is utilizing, or working with the port, or doing something with the port? Do they do that? Do you understand what I'm talking about?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Newell because he did the research, and he, he probably has the answers. Then I would like to get into what's different between us and Juno, and then how can we and make it different, I mean, make it so it's an option for us at some point.
Okay, well, first of all, when we say general support, I'm not sure if the, the money in Juno's actually going into the general fund.
Don't they put the CPV into their port fund and then take port funds out and put it in the general fund?
I don't know what they do that or not. They call it general support. Um, they don't call it necessarily money's going into their general fund.
Okay.
From my understanding, and I don't really have a lot of details, it's all been conversations with Juno, and I've been trying to get the details, if, if the general support is based on a formula. And this formula was developed, uh, back in two thousand, I believe. And the formula was reviewed by the industry. It was developed in conjunction with, uh, legal counsel and, um, finance department, the manager's office, and the department that, um, of Juno. And the analysis through the formula was reviewed by an outside independent, uh, accounting firm to verify that it was reasonable. And they've been using that formula since two thousand two. They have not updated it. Uh, they reference the formula frequently in their discussion when they set their annual appropriations. Uh, I have asked for information about the formula. I have not been able to get it yet. And as soon as I get it, I'll be happy to share it with the council.
What's the problem with the lieu taxes and that, Carl?
Maybe I, let me try to address that, and Mr. Mayor, it's gonna be my strong recommendation as you review this concept, that you have Mitch Seaver here to talk about his legal view of what you can and what you can't do. I'm not speaking for him, but I'm, I'm gonna give you my, my understanding based on the discussions I've had with him. Our port revenue is basically derived from, the majority of our port revenue is derived from three different sources. We have what we charge for warfage based on the size of the ship.
Right.
Docking charges. We have our local head tax, what we assess for passenger, our seven dollars. If you review the excerpts from the code, I understand that they were put into place with the assistance of men Preston Gates and Ellis, who are now K L Gates, to ensure that we comply with federal law. Based on my conversations with the city attorney, it's my belief that he's going to advise you those monies cannot be diverted from the port fund. Third source is-
You're talking about warfage?
Right. Warfage and pa- our local passenger head tax.
You don't wanna touch it?
That, that's my understanding of what he, he is gonna tell you. Based on what he's told me, I think he's gonna see that there's a greater degree of latitude that the council has with the state CPV funding, approximately two million week, week of the year. If you can tie general fund expenditures to how we serve the passengers or the ships, for example, EMS, that would be an appropriate expense that we could use CPV funds to pay. But you're gonna have to take it through the full nexus that, I'm just gonna pull numbers out of the air. Let's say our annual cruise ship EMT runs cost six hundred thousand dollars a year. Well, if we bill four hundred thousand in revenue, then your delta becomes two hundred thousand. The question then is, can you bring over two hundred thousand while you're charging a payment and lieu of taxes? And I think the answer is no, because you're double dipping. So it, 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 it's gotta be well thought through. My preference would be to get the, um, industry to, to sign on, because quite candidly, we're not Juno. Okay, and I don't want ketchup can to be the straw that breaks camp's back. And that, the litigation is launched, and we're into a, 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 a difficult situation. That aside, I do believe that CPV funds is an appropriate use for something like the repair of the town's base and peeling platform. That potentially could be up to two point seven million dollars. You don't have that on the general government side, if we're gonna affect or replace that, that viewing platform in the next twelve months. If you elect to use CPV funds, um, next year's CPV funds are gonna be effectively spoken for. You're not gonna have a lot of, a lot of latitude. That's why we're saying twelve months from now, if you wanna, if you can do it and do it right. Ultimately, it will be your, your, your call.
On the industry part of it, you said, um, somebody said during the formula of Juno, when the industry was involved with that?
Yeah.
That's what we've been told.
They did tell. They, they reviewed it.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to add one other comment.
You bet.
When you talk about taking passenger warfage fees and using that to support general, um, general operations, you have to be very, very careful because the passenger warfage fees are used to determine whether or not the port is needing a bond covenant. And I'm not really sure how that would impact our bond covenant if we were to take a million dollars out of the port and put it into the general fund. That's for causes of the invalidation of our covenant, but that's another thing that we need to take in mind.
Matt, you have a question?
Um, and maybe this is a question for Mitch, but if I don't say it now, no one's gonna be able to remind me next meeting. Um, if they've already have the legal opinion, why can't we shift their agreement off to the cruise industries and then utilize the same accounting firm? If they still exist, I'm assuming they do. To, to do the formula and fast-track this, would that be an acceptable way?
That's a very good idea, but that's the problem. I'm trying to get my hands on that formula so we can review it and see whether or not it's appropriate for testing.
I mean, would that be?
If you're thinking, um, we're gonna be able to have a discussion between now and when you have to adopt a budget. Traditionally, it would be at the December nineteenth meeting. We're not gonna get a response from the cruise industry until they have it.
Bob?
How do we differ then?
I don't know what's in the formula. I have no idea how they develop the formula. I know Juno does them through a pilot, but the port enterprise fund we do. Those are the things we have to look for. We charge interdepartmental charges for our port enterprise fund. I don't know if Juno does that. We have to be careful. I saw, mentioned that we're not double dipping.
Yeah, and, but, Bob, are one of those, I mean, there's two funds, and we got a warfage fee and we got a state CPV.
Right.
Now, the warfage, you know, it specifically states that, you know, it's, it's based on services you can provide.
Mm-hmm.
And I think all the CPV money that Juno's using right now is going into their capital expenditures, similar to what we're doing.
Correct, yeah.
They're using their warfage fees.
Right.
And I think they allocate three dollars of that. And what they do is they have the departments, uh, use their, their discretion to come up with what they feel their costs is associated that is there and billable. And somehow this goes into a formula system, but, uh, just reading the documents we have, I mean, the, the issue with EMS and other things are separate than the one point four million that they're utilizing for offsetting public works, uh, duties, you know, whether it's painting streets, cleaning empty garbage cans. I think they hire seasonal police department, uh, there, there's just a lot of things, the engineering that they do on the port. And so I, that's why I, I'm kinda with Matt. You know, I think we do have to figure out the pilot and the, uh, interdepartmental charges, but the fact is, is we don't have to reinvent the wheel as far as the ability to use those, as long as we're not doing it illegally and double dipping.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel. That's one of the reasons why I'd like to get my hands on the formula. But what little I've been able to gather from looking at the information I have been given is that in some cases, when Juno uses passenger warfage fees, you pay for some of their general support, they actually go out and hire more people. An example might be EMS in the, in the summertime, when they know the loads are gonna increase, patient loads are gonna increase, they hire more EMS people. We don't necessarily, we're not necessarily proposing to do that. And so those are the kind of things that I'm talking about. All I wanna do is just make sure that whatever we do complies with federal and state laws.
I don't disagree with that. Again, relative to local warfage, not state CPV, you really need to hear from the attorney, city attorney, his review of, of that and what his, his opinion is. If this is the direction we're gonna go, then I, I would-
Well, I don't know if it's the final direction, but we should at least delve into it. We should get all of them, uh, everything, and, and I don't know if you need direction from the council, or if you got enough already.
I have enough, but I really think it would be appropriate, before we get too far into this, that tomorrow night I have Attorney Seaver here.
Well, I don't, I think, um, we understand we can't do it in the next two weeks, but I think it's something we should continue to get the information and whatever. We might not be able to work it this year, but it's something we need to get all the details of what we can and what can't do, because it is an option at some time. Matt, did you have any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify for Bob and Carl. I was taking my one million and sa- and pulling five hundred thousand that we already kept, so essentially saying that we'd remove the, the payment and the taxes, just so you understood. And I'm, and so, but based on this, it sounds like Juno only gets five hundred thousand passengers.
Juno?
Oh, they get-
Well, but if they, if they transfer three dollars per person-
Their passenger warfage fee is five dollars.
Right.
Right.
And if they get a million and a half from this, and they get three dollars per person, that'd only be five hundred thousand people they're accounting for, so it must be. I mean, I, I do think three dollars per person here, that'd be two point seven million, and that would be excessive, and I don't think that's an appropriate number, but, so it's just surprising to Bob.
Ken?
I guess I'm a little perplexed. Isn't this a subject that we've been batting around for a while now, asking for clarification over and over and over again? I mean, haven't we asked for clarification from the lawyer? Our lawyer?
We're working our way there. We haven't been officials.
Okay, 'cause I, I just feel like, you know, we're not moving forward if we're just continually asking the same questions and not getting answers to make decisions on.
We're going to get those now. The management hasn't got the direction correct, Carl?
We've got it. We've been trying.
I understand. I'm not complaining. I just said, just keep moving on that. Anybody have any other questions? Otherwise, um, does anybody have any questions on the transmit a letter? Go ahead, Matt.
I just have one more. Um, when we talk about the seasonal sales tax, if, if you look at, and the question comes up for people that are, um, below the poverty line, if you look at a, a family that's spending paycheck to paycheck, in the summer, they'll spend a half a cent extra per, per dollar in sales tax, but in the winter, they'll spend a half a cent less. So it should be a wash over the course of the year. And that's, I mean, that's what I anticipate would happen anyways. I know our spending is pretty stable across the year.
Anybody have any questions on the transmit a letter? Or the budget, um, overview?
Governor?
Yes.
Um, I just wonder if we need to make a decision about, um, on the revenue side before we go too far along in this.
If somebody wants to give direction to the management or make a motion, you got ideas, it's up to you guys. Bob?
Well, didn't you say you had some ideas to propose?
I do.
I would, I'd like to hear those first.
You bet. Carl?
Well, we were putting together the, the, the main budget document. We evaluated the potential number of layoffs that, uh, we're gonna have to confront. Bob and I started talking about, is there an alternative approach to this? Recognizing we need a, an infusion of revenue. Actually, the budget that I submitted to this council is a lot better than the one that I originally started off with. Because at that particular time, we were in discussions with the borough relative to the issue of funding the library, and at that time, I had no commitment from the borough that we're gonna continue to fund the library, so the budget document in first draft had a number of additional positions at the library eliminated, and the library operating three days a week, because that was the magnitude of the loss during the July budget session, Councilmember Harris made a particular poignant comment about sales tax not being raised for the last twenty, twenty-five years. He's absolutely correct. So what we're gonna present to you tonight is based on Councilmember Harris's comment, and our belief that within the next two to three years, borough funding of the library is gonna go away. And that is based on, hopefully, the loss of federal timber receipts to support education. I got an email from AML, uh, last Friday, uh, saying that this is the year it looks like it might get cut. In one of my conversations with the borough manager, he was saying there are increased costs for education this year. We're putting a lot of pressure on the budget. It's in part the reason the assembly wanted us to start tracking patron activity to get an idea of what is a fair allocation. If they lose their, their federal education receipts, I guarantee you that their support of the library will go away. So what we're proposing essentially is to take Councilmember Harris's comment during the July session and the recognition that it is likely that borough support will go away. What we're doing is proposing a one-half percent increase in the general fund sales tax. Uh, that would be dedicated to fund operational costs and the debt service associated with the library. If that were done effective next July, we would be in a position not to have to go back to the borough for ongoing annual support of the, of the library, which I think is gonna go away regardless. By doing this, uh, in the first year, uh, you increase, increase nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue that could be then applied to do library operations and debt service and free up money to restore the positions that were eliminated. In two thousand fifteen, on a full year, uh, your receipts would increase, uh, to about one point four seven five. You've got our cover memo. It just basically deal, details that proposal. The other thing that the council's gonna have to do, and the minimum wastewater rates are gonna have to go up four percent. That would just get you the one operator that was recommended for elimination. It should go up a lot more than four percent, because you don't have the money to address capital needs right now. And I think that's something that the council's gonna have to have some serious discussion about. Um, the attractive thing about this alternative, it also gives us the ability to restore the public works, sales tax funding of community grants. Doesn't do the general fund portion, but I'm sure the council's gonna wanna address that later on. This is one solid way to make sure the library would be paid for on an area-wide basis, including Saksman, not have to go through the annual debate that we go through relative to whether the borough should fund library operations or not. Ensures everybody pays a fair share. And it's, uh, a way to get around what I think will be the inevitable loss of borough funding of the library. I think the handwriting is on the wall, and I find no fault with that decision. If they lose their- If they lose their educational receipts, which I think is, is, is going to happen sooner rather than later, we have to be prepared to plug that gap in our revenue plan. I don't want to see the library operating three days a week because we don't have that, that money. This is a way around that. Bob, do you want to comment further? That, that, that's our one proposal.
I'm not sure if it was clear when Paul was talking about the intent was to take that one-half or 1% sales tax and put it into a special revenue fund that would be called the Library Services Fund. And those money would be dedicated to operate the, the library and pay for the debt service. And that would be our way to demonstrate to the citizens of Ketchikan that that money here is dedicated for library purposes. Very similar to what we do at the hospital, um, sales tax money. Very similar to what we do.
Would more money be raised with the library sales, sort of a sales tax than would be actually needed for the bond service?
Yeah.
About how much more would be raised?
No, this would cover the, this would cover the...
Okay, but there, and there wouldn't be any extra? Or would, would you protect any extra?
Right now, it's basically a break even.
That's for a whole year collection, Bob?
If you look at, if you look at that schedule, the second page from the back, the last two columns, and we showed it to reserve to the Library Services Fund at the end of 2014 would be $51,930. And that would be after paying operating cost and debt service. And then in 2015, it would go up slightly to about 59,000. Again, it's basically breaking, breaking even.
Carl, so on the general fund side, that would save us 700,000?
The general fund side is where, that's all? You're with me? It would produce enough money to restore the staffing cuts proposed to the tune of about 940,000, 941,000.
So how much do we use of the general fund right now into the library budget as I've looked?
If you look at that, that page that we were just looking at, the second page from the, from the back.
I was looking at the page.
Don't look at the handout. The, the proposed budget, the one that you're looking at right now shows a deficit of 519,689. And after we make all the adjustments that were proposed, then the deficit would increase to about 602,000. That's under the revised budget column. That would be the third column, and that would feed, would very comparable to 2014, that proposed.
Okay, so, but I'm just looking at, right now, what are we, in the budget, you have proposed 659,000 for the 2014 budget for general fund.
Right.
So we, if we instated that sales tax, it would pay for the cost of, thinking about 1.3 or so. And we'd save about 700,000, which would reinstate the employees. And how much, how much was that in, I guess I'm confused on the numbers. You're saying 900,000?
That's the, the effective cost to restore the positions. What Mr. Newell is saying is the additional revenues that we can derive are sufficient to restore the staffing, pay, pay the operations of the library and debt service.
I know, but if we make it earmarked straight to the library, the library's cost is 1.3 million a year? Okay, and so if we're going to collect 1.4, that only frees up then what the general fund was putting into, correct?
Uh, not quite because there's other revenue going into the library besides the...
That could maybe be used by us and for the general fund. They can?
No, no.
No.
And I know I'm probably confusing, but I, I go slow when I get there.
I'm not tracking what you're saying.
Okay, we're going to put in a sales tax of 1.4.
Which would derive in the first year about 965,000.
I'm looking at the one, like the next year or whatever. Okay.
One million 475,000.
Yeah, okay, bingo. So we have a, and we've used that to pay for all that library. I'm saying from looking at this budget, that means it only frees up the general funds about 700,000, correct?
Right, but there's other revenues we need to pick up too. There's, um, there's about 212,000 coming from the University of Alaska for operating their, their libraries.
And would that fund, that go into our general fund?
No, that will go into the Library Services.
So can we utilize that Library Service Fund for other things other than the library?
That would be up to the discretion of the council.
Okay, that's what I mean. I thought you earmarked it.
You're also going to lose the revenue.
I understand. I understand. That's what I mean. I'm just trying to find out what we're really saving.
Just like you do with public work sales tax or the hospital sales tax, ultimate disposition would be at the council's discretion. We're just saying like you have designated other funds in the past, this would make sense to dedicate to library operation. Set it up in a dedicated fund, just like you did for solid waste, just like you did for wastewater.
And then based on the projections, it's not going to be much. It could be used for anything else. I mean, we're going to end up with a fund balance of 50,000 after this first year. There's not much you can...
No, I'm just looking at what we're doing for our general fund. That's what I was seeing, how much money that saves up. I mean, by doing that, how it affects the general fund. From what I gather, it's going to affect the general fund from 650 to 700,000 in a positive way.
Looking at it net, I'm looking at it gross. Okay, what it does is infuse in the first full year of 12 months, it infuses the general fund with 1,475,000, which you can dedicate to the library and free up 1,475,000.
Okay, where do we free, I guess I'm not, I guess I'm not getting this right. We're going to bring in from, if we had the sales tax, we're going to bring in 1.4.
In the first full year.
Correct, right, okay. And it's going to pay for, I'm on the hospital, I mean, the library page right here, budget. And the total funding revenue that we need like for 2014 under here is 1.3 million. Under revenue, revenue sources total. And it's in the budget.
Yeah, I think that we're already using our, our funds to fund what we have in our library operation right now, what Carl's talking about.
Well, I understand.
Is that the, the point that the money we're going to get from the borough that may go away, the, the money we're infusing will take care of that 400 and some thousand.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. So you have a million one left after you pay the portion that the borough is paying now. That's the only portion we're talking about is the subsidy from the borough.
Yes.
Another way of looking at it, the bottom line is by taking the library out of the general fund, we have enough money where we can add back all the positions that were proposed to eliminate and basically end up with the same deficit we're projecting in the proposed budget that you have in front of you.
Okay, and I understand that. Okay, now, let's don't think about this as this year. Let's think about it as next year, we're going to get 1.4 million. Okay, the cost of running that, of a library is like 1.3, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so that fund's going to take care of that. Now, next year, if we do it that way, this revenue that's coming out of the general fund right now will be freed up.
Less the amount of the...
For the employees. There we go, okay. So now, what is that grand total left after you take out your employees? About 380?
We haven't done the calculations. We can, we can bring them back to you tomorrow night if that's what you'd like to see. But just remember, again, if there is excess money left over, you're already starting in the hole to the tune of about 500,000.
Well, I know. I'm just trying, trying to figure out how much we're going to be benefiting from this.
Well, there isn't going to be any money left over, I guess, maybe that.
Well, I understand. That, I just want to know how much money we're going to have from the general fund that now can take, oh, cut down some of our deficit. And I guess I'm not making myself clear at all.
Can we take a five-minute break?
You bet. You bet. Okay, we're back from break. That's right, I can't count that far. Hit it again.
We're gonna call it a fix-it, people. I think we have a lot, we lose one.
Sorry, I apologize. Okay, my question was answered on the, um. It only, it only, yeah. It only cost Carl the time, yeah.
Clear, can you sum that?
No, thank you.
Okay, sum that, you can't sum that.
Alright, so, we're back to, um. We can go through the budget, um, department to department unless you guys want to give some direction.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
After receiving the transmittal memorandum, Carl, regards to the general fund operating budget, and they have proposed a revised resolution, I'd like to make a motion that we substitute resolution number thirteen twenty-five thirty. That's discussed. That included the recommendations for the half percent sales tax and the four percent wastewater rate.
Do we have a second? Move in second. I'm Carl. Now, this replaces the, um, the resolution we have right now, so we don't vote on it, we just keep moving forward in the budget process. Or do we vote on this?
We have to vote on substituting the resolution, it's not voting to pass it.
No.
Substituting. That would become a substitute budget, Doc.
Any comments? Bob, do you want to add anything?
Well, I'd like to hear from the other council members. Heard the discussion about, um, a whole percent on sales tax, and I wanna hear. Because, we're still gonna be short if we don't.
Jay Jay?
Talking a half percent, I personally think a whole percent would make a big difference. And if we give us money to start with next year, we'd already be starting next year in the hole again, we have a little cushion. Big step up to one percent is a lot, we haven't raised anything like this in twenty years. But I think we're just scared of the half, and with the same decision we are next year.
I don't know if I'd agree with it.
I don't know.
But again, it's discussion purposes, I think, is. We've all acknowledged that we need to increase funds, this would be at first, he's just a long statement.
Anybody else? Jimmy?
Honestly, I mean, we haven't raised it in twenty years, things are going up, it's time, we need a cushion here. We can't keep doing this to ourselves. I mean, it really, I don't see it as that big of an impact. Forty years, it's gonna be spread out, I mean, I think.
Anybody else?
Yep. There was also a discussion in regards to raw fish tax, maybe the cap, I don't know, that'd come out later. With maybe an additional half percent, I think at this point, the half percent, we didn't use. Have the opportunity to bring that back.
Let's call a roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy? Severson?
Yes.
West? Carlson? Olsen?
Yes.
Look at that, passes six to nothing. So the substitute, um. Resolution is, um, passed, which includes the, um, four percent increase in wastewater, half cent, uh, mill rate, I don't know, half cent sales tax. Alright, um.
Your honor.
Yes?
I've just got two more that I would like to share.
Okay.
I move we split the raw fish tax fifty-fifty between harbors and.
The gentleman, motion to split the raw fish tax between the harbors and the general fund. Matt, you want to speak to it?
When we originally moved it over there, I always said that my vote was continuing on a medium one percent increase to improve the harbors for the fishing community, I don't think it's the US. The extra hundred percent of the general fund would improve the city. On this side, careful streets.
Anybody else?
There.
Yes.
I'd like finance director to come up to the voting. We split it fifty-fifty, what does that do to the harbors' ability to pay back loans?
Harbors owners will check out.
I'd say, oh, pick up, override, again, so. Set it up so that, that office, uh, can pay off that. Cut it in half.
Matt, first, Bob, didn't we have close to seven hundred thousand dollars already in harbors from the raw fish tax before we even started?
Based on the project, the capital project that had been programmed for twenty fourteen, they're going to be accepted by the government. I don't, um, find out, I believe it, but.
That's the fund, all of them is, um.
Having forever.
Fishing and, and breaking, uh, breaking, non, non-commercial. Hey, Bob, don't run away. How much are they programmed to pay each year for the, um, make it four years?
Uh, I, oh, we, yeah. Four hundred. Twelve thousand, I.
They don't need, I need to be real. And how much did they get in this last year?
Uh, if here we got four hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Now, since the fishing was such a good one, and it should maybe even close to double, um, can they make a bigger payment?
If it does double, I have no way of knowing. We programmed four hundred and fifty thousand, that I could not be provided.
Yeah, it gets maybe lower. This is an internal loan, and we can change the terms of it if we want.
Also working pretty clear on how they wanted it, yeah, right now, or not.
Paying it back over eight years versus paying it back over four a week.
Pop.
Not gonna cost me.
Well, pop, pop.
That's the sum that is made. I just thought. Alright, any other questions on Matt's motion to divert half the raw fish tax back to the general fund, split fifty-fifty? Bob?
So at this point, hundred percent of the raw fish, when he is being used, in support of the harbor, and.
But in four years, none of it will be used. Right now. I don't know what kind of, I mean, I.
West? Olsen?
Yes.
Carlson? Bert, oops, sorry, Harris? Severson? Zingy?
Okay, I failed, Matt, you said you had it over?
I have one more, I move to increase the single item sales tax one thousand.
We move in second, Matt, you have the rest?
Boroughs already promised you, I think it's long past due, if we would've done this, we counted for inflation, since we put the one thousand dollar cap in, and I apologize, just round numbers in memory, it would be around thirty-four hundred dollars. Around thirty-four hundred dollars for a second. We would've done it, that is, so, still, I think.
There, yeah. So have you done, we like, well, this is.
We will program it.
And what's the projected revenue? I went to the end of the, um. Uh, go ahead, anybody else?
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy? Harris? Olsen? West? Carlson?
We have access to that. Anything else? Alright, anybody else have anything before we jump to another budget section? Alright, um.
So, we're gonna start going through the project, right, we have a revise schedule based on the resolution. Before we just address, so each time we come to a part that we had.
I would assume, in terms of the substitution of the resolution, in essence, the employee reductions go away, so that's how we would set it up. Other non-discretionary causes, I can't really find, I'll start with the councils. Federal lobbyist system. The small business development councils, um. Oscar, Juneau, Flyin, those kinds of things, we take, we take action, staffing, as soon as we restore our substitution. That's the councils.
Bob?
But, we could also address the issues that you just mentioned, in regards to the increase in the one thousand, two thousand.
We, we can. For tomorrow night, we will bring back revised revenue projections based on the actions tonight, and then if the council wants to go unit by unit and say, okay, we're gonna restore the federal lobbyists, we're gonna restore community agency grants, and the general fund, we have that discussion.
I'm sorry, it's just.
Oh, it's not your fault.
I don't.
I shouldn't have hit the hands.
It, it's not your fault either.
Heavy-handed there.
Well, how the people coming tomorrow look at it?
So Carl, would you? Would you come back tomorrow, you will have, I mean, you're not going, are you gonna have a list of everything that, um, that could possibly be in each department, or, or a list of everything that could be restored?
That, that's, we can do it one of two ways, we can come back.
I just want every, let's see what there's, there we go, we got it. I've got it.
On the hand?
It's on that.
On the hand, oh, oh.
That's what I'm.
That's the last thing, for all these things.
That's all I need.
We can also, there is a revised personal budget, so you take, like, for example, city managers, they got one out, a new city manager budget, that incorporates all these changes.
Well, my question is, Carl, do we need to make motions for everything that was taken out if we go, wanna go through, if we wanna restore it, I don't know.
If you want to restore.
No, it's already been restored.
No, the positions have been restored, but there are other things that have not been restored.
The, no, the, everything that we propose to restore, we all sort of, it's actually asking we put it into the regular.
Right.
There are other things, not that, that have been restored. The federal lobbyists, we've not, right.
If you did, for example, for traveling, rain, other.
Well, can you make a list of what hasn't been restored, so we can have an option if you want? Like, some things I might want to push the council to restore, I don't know, I need to know which ones are in the new resolution.
Positions are in the new resolution, or I can make a list of those.
You just mentioned the twenty-five to the small business, why? I'm having a chance, are they all listed here, or these are things you restored that you put into your new resolution? I need to know what is been restored.
That's not in that, I don't get it.
Um, Matt?
Need to return the life, I heard you once, I forgot to ask. So, this would be treated then essentially like an enterprise fund? It's not, I understand, it's separate now?
That would be the intent, but the council always retains its discretion, there are excess funds.
But we can establish it, we establish it as an enterprise fund, that we would be paying the full taxes.
When are you talking about the library?
Starting looking back at the library.
No, that may be a non-ordinary, that's. It's really not a enterprise fund, if it's a.
And then, the next question, I have, goes back. So we're gonna, we're gonna say sales tax, and then all revenue would be accounted for, so all the late book fees, which, which I know are negligible. All of that would be accounted, put into that.
Correct, we have to track that separately now, in terms of, or as we're following, true up, there is.
Okay, and then, but the next part of that is, then what happens to the, um, the agreement between the school districts and the library, and the university library?
That's a separate, um, transaction, not covered by this proposal. Consortium would still have to be funded by the city, the university, and the school district based on the three ways. Discussion last week between the school district library and the school superintendent, the university library, our library, my office, we come to charge, consortium funding next year. We're able to, the school district, like, education, so I don't need an action. They will continue to pay as the university.
Okay, um, our next thing is to go through each area. Um, I was hoping we could maybe do that tomorrow, once we have our list, of what, um, is still not in the budget, so we decide, when we come to each department, we want to, um, do anything with that, I always thought of a bunch of stuff, there is, um, there's one that, that like us, that I can restore, and others probably not. Up to the council.
Your honor, does that mean that we just want recess to come on? Sessile, having flavor of that.
Yes, I just have a request. When we get our information tomorrow, can we also get the projections for, um, increasing the sales tax seasonally, instead of just, so across the year, I have, just a big one percent.
Define the summer months. April, food.
Do the seasonal thing. See if that one was percent, and then revert it back to the third.
That would revert it back to the half a percent we just raised. Okay, I just, just go there.
Anybody else? We have a motion to, what do we think? Motion recess?
I don't move.
See you guys here tomorrow at seven.